Good evening and welcome to the May 17th meeting of the City of Vista Planning Commission. Would you all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Albert Aguilar?
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, John. Ms. Pressby, roll call, please.
Chair Rossler, all commissioners are present as well as student commissioners with the exception of Beth Hastings.
All right, Commissioner Hastings had hip surgery last Friday and is at home recovering. She's doing well and will be with us next month. Commissioners, you've been provided with the minutes of our May 3rd meeting. If there are no changes to the minutes, could we hear a motion to approve? Commissioner Grimm?
I'll move to approve.
It's been, and Commissioner Garretson?
I second.
It's been moved to second to approve the minutes from our May 3rd meeting. All in favor, cast your votes and lock them in. And the motion passes five to zero to one. Commissioner Aguilar was not with us last meeting. Very good. Michael, are there any changes to the agenda tonight?
No agenda changes tonight.
All right, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, the next item on our agenda is Oral Communications. This is a time that the commission sets aside for members of the public to address us on issues that are not on the agenda. You would need to fill out a speaker slip, and I do not have any. Anyone interested in addressing the commission, say none. We will move on to our discussion item. Let me kind of, we were expecting a bit more folks here tonight, so let me run through this briefly. Early design review is a process that the city offers to builders and developers to get planning commission and the neighborhood input on their project before it goes through a formal submittal. The project has not been reviewed by any of the city departments or outside agencies. We will provide comments on the site design, the architecture, landscaping, and circulation. No decision will be made tonight. And this is a discussion item. It is a formal process in the city. It is not an open forum on the project. That I'm required by the state and by the city to run a fair hearing, and that does not include clapping, cheering, comments from the audience. But we are interested in your input, and if you fill out a speaker slip, when we get to the public comment time, I will call on you. You'll have three minutes to address the commission. When the red light comes on, I will ask you to summarize your position, and we will move on. We won't worry about next up tonight. If you don't want to speak, but you want to be recorded, want your position recorded, you can fill out a speaker slip, indicate that you don't want to speak, and I will read your name and position into the record. We will have a staff presentation. The applicant will be afforded time to present the project. We'll have questions from the commissioners. Then I will open it up for public comment, and then we will have commissioners' comments. At that time, I will close off the mic, and it will just be comments from the commissioners. We will talk about the architecture, the site plan. We may have questions for the applicant, and he'll get back up and answer our questions. I would encourage you to stay involved in the process. Changes may occur to the project. I'm reminded of the Delp, of the Peak project at Delpy Corners up on East Fistaway and Foothill. That project came to the planning commission three times before it was approved, and it was finally approved at about half the density, so changes are possible. Also, this process will require a general plan amendment, zone change, and a specific plan amendment. There'll be staff reports, there'll be a formal application, and an environmental document. When that environmental document comes out, it will, has a ton of detail in it, and will answer a lot of questions for you about the project. Having said all that, Mr. Conley, your staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. You covered a few of my slides there, so I appreciate that. The purpose of the EDR, as you mentioned, is to provide an opportunity for the commission and the public to review the project. Hasn't been reviewed. We're going to ask the applicant to present the information and provide him some feedback, but there'll be no formal vote, as the chairman mentioned. The project that's before you tonight is a preliminary proposal to develop 181 apartment units on a 4.59 acre site. The site includes the Pheasant Hill specific plan, which has been before the commission before, as well as two residential properties at 212 Guajome Street and 446 Lotta de Loma Drive. The site is generally surrounded by Guajome, Lotta de Loma, and the NCTD rail line, and I'll show you an aerial here in a moment. The site's currently vacant with the exception of the two single-family homes at 212 Guajome and 446 Lotta de Loma. As was mentioned by the chairman, the project does require a general plan amendment and zone change, so in the formal process, it will come back through the commission for a formal recommendation to the city council, who will take final action. With respect to the project that's coming before you, the site plan and elevations that are included in your package show three interconnected four-story residential buildings over one and two-story parking garage, and that's about 164 units within that main structure, and a separate three-story residential building that includes 17 units, overall 181. Accesses proposed from Guajome Street, just west of the NCTD rail line. There's no access proposed up above from Lotta de Loma. There are 304 parking spaces proposed as part of the project, which includes 258 for the residents and 46 guests, which is consistent with the specific plan that they're asking to incorporate the project into. There are a number of amenities, including a roof deck, pool, spa, gym, dog run, garden area, and a large pass of open space, and the project proposes a contemporary architectural design. This is the project site, shown from an aerial view. You can see the North County Transit Rail Line to the east, Guajome Street to the north, and Lotta de Loma to the west. The neighborhood there, to the west, is Lotta de Loma that runs down to Vista Village Drive. Majority of the properties to the west are within the R1 or R1B zone. Properties to the east are within the downtown specific plan, generally split by the rail line. The vacant properties that are all in the middle of the site here comprise the former Pheasant Hill specific plan, which was a 24 lot, single-family subdivision that was approved about five years ago on the site. This project incorporates that property as well as the property at 212 Guajome on the north end and 446 Lotta de Loma on the south end. The general plan designation is shown here on the left. This is the existing general plan. The site's designated medium density, which is the beige color, and medium-high density, which is the orange color on the north end there, the one lot at 212 Guajome. Similarly, the zoning is RM15 on 212 Guajome. The Pheasant Hill specific plan is all the purple color there in the middle, and the property at 446 Lotta de Loma is R1B. These would change in terms of the proposal to mixed use. On the left, the entire property would be designated, the purple designation of mixed use, and on the right, the entire property would be brought into the downtown specific plan. That's what's proposed. As mentioned, we'd have a GPA, a zone change, and specific plan amendment. The project itself would be a site development plan for review of the design specifics. It's 181 units, market rate, development. The setbacks per the downtown Vista specific plan are zero on the front and side and 15 feet in the rear. The project currently encroaches into a portion of the rear setback, depending on where we determine that rear setback to be. There's a step back of the building facade above two stories, adjacent to one and two-story buildings in the specific plan. That's a 10-foot requirement, and the project currently encroaches into that setback area. There's a mix of studio, one, two, three, and four-bedroom units in the project. It proposes a density of 40 units to the acre, which is consistent with the downtown specific plan. The height of the overall project is four stories, about 60 feet tall for the main building. The smaller building on the north end of the site is three stories. It would be about 33 feet tall. As mentioned, the project would have 304 parking spaces, which meets the specific plan, and the amenities I mentioned earlier. It requires three amenities for a project over 50 units, and it meets that requirement with some additional amenities proposed. The site plan and landscape plan are shown here in conceptual format. The main building is the, the main three buildings undulate across the site following the topography of the properties. You can see access comes from Guajome, which is on the right side of the site plan, but it's the north end of the project site. Would be a main driveway that would serve an open parking area in front of the building, in front of, next to the rail line, and that would also serve the parking garages under each of the three structures. The separate three-story building on the north end would just be surface park. There's no underground parking under that. You can see there's a large open space area between Lotta de Loma and the apartment structure. That would be their primary amenity space. It would be pool, gardens, additional workout room space, and some other amenities. The applicant has a detailed presentation that'll go through all that. And last thing to mention, they are proposing to preserve a number of the trees that are up along Lotta de Loma, as well as some of the larger trees that exist on the site down by the tracks. This is a cross-section showing the middle portion of the project. Lotta de Loma is on the left side of the screen here, and the North County Transit Line is on the right side. You can see there's a significant grade change along the project from west to east, descending in the site. The project builds into the slope so that there are subterranean parking garages under the four-story structure. The intent was to try to minimize the height of the structure from the single-family residential side and have the open-facing side of the project facing into the downtown. Architecture, I mentioned a contemporary style, using various different types of materials. Again, the architect is here, and we'll go over a detailed review. This is the southerly building, the central building, and the northern building, all in a similar architectural style. And this is the separate detached three-story building. These drawings are all in your packet as well. There's a couple of perspectives that are included in the packet. This is looking northwest, from near the railroad tracks across the property. You can see the three buildings there and the sort of way that they step up the property. Parking garages are on the lower levels, which are partially screened with some landscaping, and then you can see the four stories of residential above the parking structures. And this is another perspective that was included in the packet, looking from the southwest near where Guajome would be. So with that, staff's requesting that the planning commission provide comments for the applicant. As mentioned, there's no formal vote or action. To mention, with respect to history of the project, it did go to the city council on discussion back in August of last year to discuss the general plan and zone change, and I believe I included the minutes of that meeting in your packet, but they would have to go back to the council for a formal decision on this project if a formal application was submitted, since it requires a general plan and zone change. With that, the applicant has a presentation that they'd like to go through, if that's okay with the commission.
Okay. We can hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening, Commissioners, staff, members of the community. Thank you for taking the time to hear our proposal. My name is Lev Gershman. I'm the founding and managing partner of Tideline Partners. And I really like this slide here because it reminds me how much downtown has changed and how many strides it's taken to fulfill the vision that spelled out in the downtown specific plan. We are proposing a project that we firmly believe supports this vision. It's the reason we pursued this project, and we set out some clear goals for ourselves to make sure we stay on track, as well as even naming the project to keep our entire design team focused on the intent. The project goals are to fulfill the downtown specific land vision, support small local businesses, connect to infrastructure and amenities, and enhance connection to nature. I'm really excited to introduce our award-winning design team. They're behind me, and you'll have a chance to speak. Safdie Rabina's Architects is, I'm thrilled that they were willing to sign up with us on this project. They have too many awards to really name, but to name a few, San Diego Architecture Foundation Awards, the American Institute of Architecture, Schmidt Design Group, our landscape architect, awards from the American Society of Landscape Architects, San Diego Architectural Foundation, and the American Public Works Association. Tideline is a boutique real estate and community development firm founded in 2013 on the principles of economic, community, and environmental value. On the slide, you see some of the projects we've completed specifically in the downtown. We were set in motion by our mission. We believe that through our work, we can help build a better future. We understand that we must stay in balance with nature while finding ways to meet the growing needs of humanity and our community. Our mission is to make places better. Our projects are intent-driven. The intent is set by the unique characteristics of the place and the needs of the community. I'm sure you know some of the projects here. Tom's Shoe Repair, Gone Beer Garden, that place was a gathering place and a place to bump into your neighbors for many years, as you came to visit Tom Fleming and Ken Reese. And we dedicated a portion of that place to a large community gathering space as the patio, and left the hexagonal window under which Tom and Kent sat every morning solving world problems, as they would say. 150 East Broadway is another project that we completed, and our intent with that project was to drive energy into the Envision Arts and Culture District, so we worked with the local art foundation and commissioned a local artist to put up a mural that was a quote and a call to action to the local community, which was "Be the change you wish to see", a quote by Mahatma Gandhi. And our latest project is Found Lofts on South Santa Fe, located on the corner of Terrace Drive in South Santa Fe. And our hope with that project was to help support and establish the envisioned Arts and Culture District, and to really establish it on a national and a global art stage. The project received its certificate of occupancy in April of this year. We're 80% occupied, and I'm really happy to say that the first resident in the project was an artist from Amsterdam that we flew in, and he formally kicked off our Artist and Residence Program by living at the project with his wife and three-year-old daughter while he painted the mural, the tallest in North County. And the goal with that program is really to host artists a couple times a year, allow them to stay for free in exchange for leaving something for the community, whether it's mural, or sculpture, or performance, or spoken word. It was an intent that was self-imposed, and we're happy we were able to deliver on that intent. Heavy emphasis on sustainability. Over half of our parking is electrified. We have electric, all-weather electric bike lockers, and as you could tell, if you've walked by on the street, we invested heavily in the design. It may not be everyone's choice design, but I assure you, those were high-quality and not inexpensive materials, and we really wanted to elevate downtown's profile in terms of design quality and attract young professionals to the downtown to live, work, and play down here. A little bit about Safdie Rabina's, and there's so much to say about them. Again, I'm so happy that Tal Safdie, who's one of the principals of the firm, is here. Ricardo Rabina's, the other naming partner of the firm, are also here. So glad you guys are on this journey with us. I'll read a little bit about them. Safdie Rabina's is driven by its mission to create significant and meaningful places through the development of integrated relationships between building and landscape. Our designs evolved from an appreciation of the extraordinary beauty of our region in hopes of making a positive contribution to a richer built environment. We envision interior and exterior spaces as one, intending to blur the lines between building and garden. We strive to be sensitive to the context and to responsibly consider the environmental opportunities with the design of each building and site. We challenge ourselves to capture the essence and identity of a site so that each project is a unique response to place and program. Some of the projects highlighted here that we really like, the Scripps Seaside Forum, which responds well to the context that it sits in, as well as the Harbor Drive pedestrian bridge, that some of you may have traversed. Our landscape architecture group is Schmidt Design Group, and Schmidt prides itself on its ability to balance artistic design with environmental sensitivity. Some of you may have been to Stone Brewery, that's our landscape design, and some of you may have visited the Santa Lejo Nature Center. There's a consistent trend here, and it's focus on nature and connection to nature and integration with nature. That is not a coincidence. That one looks a little off. You just read it like this. Design teams, I must tell you, were inspired by the specific plan. It's actually what brought Tideline to downtown Vista in 2014. The vision for the general plan, and I've outlined some of the goals, well, I'll read them, they're not on the slide, is to implement smart growth and sustainability, improve connections, reduce greenhouse gases and car reliance, support healthy and diverse communities, provide a variety of housing options. And the downtown specific plan, which governs the area that we'll be talking about, was designed, and this is out of the plan, word for word, "designed to reestablish downtown as a community center where residents and visitors will live, workshop, and play in a lively, multimodal, mixed-use environment." That gets me excited. I think that sounds awesome. And then there's this. This is the site that we're here to talk to you about. It's immediately adjacent to the downtown specific plan. These are the current conditions, pictures that we took over the last few months. This site was originally slated for affordable housing, prior to Governor Brown eliminating those available dollars for the city to implement projects of this nature. As you know, it's languished for decades as it sits today. It's been underutilized and blighted, attracting all sorts of different activity, maybe unwanted activity. And it makes sense that it is in its shape that it is today because it is the most challenging development site in downtown, because it sits at a 95-foot elevation change. It's the reason that the entitlements for the 24, 25 homes were on the market for a number of years, and the hottest residential real estate market, and were not sold, because they were not economically viable. And that's why the site sits as it does today. The downtown specific plan, I love this map. So within the unshaded areas is the sort of the downtown area, the lines that were drawn and the EIR was set. Lots of amazing small businesses that we all visit that are supported by the local community in the hopes of that local community growing so their businesses can thrive, not just survive. The plan is bound by single-family and rolling hills and a fine-grained character of ownership of properties, particularly on Mercantile in South Santa Fe. And we did a study, and as you look at that corridor, half of the properties are under 7,000 square feet, and the ability to assemble any meaningful scale to develop a project of size is, I won't say impossible, but unlikely in potentially my lifetime to get enough owners that own all these different properties to come onboard and redevelop their site. The great thing about that character is that it really protects downtown Vista, which gives its charm, from sprawling growth. The rolling hills and the single-family residential really contains the intensity and the uses within the specific plan. The site that we're talking about on the map, so you could see it here, is immediately adjacent to the Sprinter, a quarter-billion-dollar investment of taxpayer dollars and $2,005 for transportation. It's immediately adjacent to the now-funded, yet-to-be-built inland rail trail, the missing piece that will connect Escondido to the Pacific Ocean. It's tucked into the hillside, and as you saw from some of the elevations that Mr. Conley shared, we really focused on trying to minimize impact by tucking the project into the site. The site is bound by industrial uses on Mercantile and Guajome and the rail, and if you were to add a density anywhere in downtown, this is an ideal strategically-located site to add housing and enable connectivity and support the small businesses that are here. So Kensha, why is the name Kensha? As I said before, it's really intended to remind our extended team of engineers and designers on the intent. Ken comes from, Kensha comes from the Zen tradition. Ken means seeing, and shou means nature, focus on nature and wellness. So who would want to live at a place like that? We think everyone, young people, old people, empty nesters, young families, and we've designed the Unimix to reflect that. And there are no four-bedroom rental products on the marketplace. We'd like to deliver that because we do think there's a need for it, but there's a reason it doesn't exist. The economics are not that easy. This is the site access and circulation. On the upper-left-hand side, you will see the entitlement for the Pheasant Hill site, which proposes access off of Lotta and Guajome. We understood that there was an acute concern around adding foot, vehicle traffic to Lotta de Loma, and our first proposal, which came before city council a year ago in the summer of last year, is the upper-right-hand side, which had a circulation going around the building. It eliminated access off of Lotta de Loma. We've since refined the project further. We brought in what I think is even a better design team and improved the circulation of the site, reducing impervious services. I'll now hand it over to Ricardo. I'll now hand it over to Ricardo Rabines to talk a little bit about the design.
Thank you, Lev, and thanks for bringing us to the city of Vista. We have been practicing in San Diego for many years, and we've been working in different cities. Every single time that we've been introduced to a new place and a new project, the big challenge that we always get is, what is what it needs to be done here? What is it fits? What is Vista? And we have learned from your specific plan, your intentions of development and bringing more activity to the center. Most of the cities have been doing this in order to sort of reinventing themselves. But it's not about reinventing. It's about bringing history back and sort of endorsing to the future. And as architects, what we do when we get a project is first understand what the site is all about and what is Vista in terms of how the history, what you have now. And when you go to see your specific plan and understand your topography, we really get excited with the idea of different levels and the topographic sites. And that speaks a lot about what it is. But that's just a sense of... Yeah. The other component is the cultural and what do you do and the residential component and all the different evolutions and the environment. Vista, the whole center-specific plan seems that it's growing, it's becoming very active, needs more probably. But there is a lot of very interesting architecture. It feels like a very happy place. It's like a little center festive place. And the art components has made it even a much more exciting. The fact that it's at the bottom of the two hills, has waters, events. I'm sure that once upon, there was more water than what it is now. But that's why the train is there, right? Because it's the bottom part and connects. And the other component is the green. And how do we create, how do those beautiful trees, old trees, salt trees, and many different types of trees has grown on this area? How, for example, the photo of this trellis with this beautiful landscape creates rooms very natural. You walk and you drive around Vista and you see that. And that's for us a way to be inspired and to understand the culture of Vista. And if we're going to propose to build it, we need to understand those elements. When we look into the plan, we look from far away. We understand your boundaries as a specific plan. But we notice that all the roads in white are completely curbing. There's different angles and creates difference vistas. And that's what a vista is about. Most of these top hills has looking above, looking all the way, and probably could get into the ocean in some of them. But it's the beauty of Vista, of open views and looking from up and looking from down. What it makes us to think, that's the unique about Vista. And that's what this character is of this neighborhood and in this city. It's not ocean side, it's flat. It's not downtown San Diego. It's not San Marcos. It's a complete difference. So when you go into architecture, you want to reflect that. And we want to feel that you're doing what the right thing to do. And we always said again, what's the right thing to do in this site? As we're looking carefully, we understand the constraints of the traffic, the connectivities, the tracks, lines that separates. The type of architecture, there is industrial architecture. There is a massing, there is a form. But it's very close to walking distance to a lot of different areas. That's the site. And we also thought that it's a beautiful fallen hill. There are existing trees. There are neighborhoods in every single corner. And you have to respond to each of them. And that the potential to do something that fits to the site is to minimize the impact on the land. And that's what we start thinking. How do we do that? And we have a program and we have an instant and how we're going to resolve it. And one possibility is to follow the shapes of the topographic lines too. But also, there's, if you see the buildings that we have right there on the bottom of the city in Santa Fe, basically, there are sort of big footprints. That's one. And leaving the greens on Loma area as a much more open space that sort of kind of creates a good move of sort of open views for the top. And the walkability from the train line circulation is, makes it clearly that you want to close and get closer to the downtown. There is also one intersection where is the crossing, which is very tight, but it's the way that it is. And it's close to that. So here, for example, we got inspired by the fact that the entry point, it's in Guajome entry. It's a sort of continuous like a pedestrian in purple, bicycle lanes on the other side. It has the green on the top. And there's three, four buildings, really, with a separation for spaces. We got inspired to the idea to create almost like a Siena House where there is an entry point, a point of access in the center. And in the back, there will be the sort of avocado trees, the orange trees, the sort of gazebo space. There's sort of much more private space. And we will go through that one. And we also thought that we want a place where the neighborhoods could see down and be able to see the green and not necessarily to see, to lose their vistas as much as possible. That's the site itself in a large form. We have the buildings. The first building in the corner is responding to a much more three-story building. It's very small, it's facing to the urban environment. The second one, and it's curving on the opposite side. The third one has two different forms and sort of enclose the space where the plaza turnaround will be entry in the middle and gazebo's in the back. We have some amenities. We have the orange trees. We have the avocados. We have a pool. We have a playground. And everything is located in a way that create the sense to be in a big house with a lot of different activities. It steps up, the volumes are stepping up and respecting the views of the levels of the topographic site and creating a minimum impact because we need cars. We have two levels of parking of every single piece. But we're trying to maximize the impact of the cars in the site. Trying to minimize total, totally that site. We also have green screens. We're looking into what are the pieces that could make it much more architecturally attractive. We have a little amenity room on the roof. We have screens, views, and we have some art walls that we can include in most of the walking area that we've been showing. This one is one of the probably much more inspiring ones. We also decided to keep the little, not a creek, but water is coming into the middle. So we decided to make a feature of it and make it at the center, become celebrating the entry. On the top, we keep most of the existing trees and we're trying to preserve as much as possible. And we add in more trees and also more specific trees that are creating shading and shade because it's important on that side. And that's our vocabulary. We have this idea that we can also create a lot of outside trellises that create sort of shady space for activities and amenities. And it feels like it's almost like a home. In this section, it's clear to see here the comparison of what's happening downtown in Santa Fe's streets, four- or five-story buildings or three-stories buildings, the space between the trains, the city-owned property, the Sprinter. And as we're going up, you can see the building proposed Kensho and the open space in the back. From Loma, the, from, what do we call? The Loma Street, sorry. You be able to see above the roof of the proposed structure. And that's, you see the dotted line? That's basically some of the clear views that we have. It will be on the top. You get all this green space in between. You saw the gazebo. And this was one of the first things that we got very inspired because we thought that the building is led the nature to be exposed and much more framing it. And we keep some of the trees that we saw were very important, especially the top one and the bottom one, which is just close to the entry site. Let me see. This is a view from Guajome, looking into the site. We are proposing to have an entry ramp, stairs to the public and different, and the car entry right on the tree story. And there's a little community room in the corner, which we can have more trees. And we imagine that we will do as much as we can to have this kind of entry where it feels like you come into an alley of trees because there is a possibility it could happen. And make it very friendly for the walkability of the place. We also have another view from the back. And in this one, in this particular one, we have groups, we have reunion with the neighborhoods. And we discuss about what can you do in the top here? Because Lotto de Loma, this is a perspective. There is, it's going to be open. But we discussing, do we want some fences? Do we want some spaces to create like a vegetable gardens? Because there is a possibility that create that character where it's not just a creative fence and simply separated. There were conversations from the neighbors that they would like to have maybe a little doggy walk area. That would be great to use. We wanted to find the ways to make it natural and inviting. And as we're preserving the trees, we can imagine that other things could happen. And we got a lot of those opinions and they were very involved in the process. Let me see where I forgot. Now, this is the detail of the opportunities with the community. And we, we're talking about the trees. We're talking about some sitting benches, looking out, what type of fences we can have, open fences, much more like a ranch fences. And again, the vegetable gardens for the community to share. And the project itself, in the back of the house, in the back of the garden, will have a vegetable garden. So all the people who will be living here will be able to take some advantage of that. That's the meeting that we have, the town hall. And we can talk more about this.
Yep. And I just want to close out with a couple of comments regarding the town hall that we held on May 7. We invited all of our neighbors and it was our first formal outreach to get some input. You see some bullet points up there that were takeaway points from that meeting. Ricardo has touched on some of them. These were what we felt were immediately actionable. Obviously, there was concerns about height and density. That is not one of the bullet points we have up there. Explore providing community access on green space, a dog park in a community park on Lotto. Prohibit, restrict project parking on Lotto de Loma, which we can do. I'm not a big fan of the way the renderings came out. That staff showed, the building is not developed to a point, so I want to caution you that the buildings will not look like that. We're not going to build that, for sure. Earth tone colors was another comment we received that the residents would like to see, I think from Lisa. You know, something that fits more into the character of the neighborhood and not so ultra-modern and sharp. Mitigate light pollution. We heard that from Lou. I don't know if Lou made it. He's not here yet. And, you know, the treatment of the fence on Lotto, right? We're basically creating a giant orchard up there of avocado and citrus trees. You know, do we want a porous fence that you could see through, like a wrought iron fence? Or would you want a wood fence that creates, you know, a privacy as you would have between the two neighbors? You know, this condition is not, we don't have transparent trees. We haven't figured out how to grow them. But the only way we could show kind of where the building would be would to create this transparency. So we appreciate your time and we really are looking for your comments. And it's good to see some of the community members out here to share their thoughts and concerns. Thank you for your time.
Very good. Thank you. Sit close. Commissioners, we'll open it up for questions of staff or the applicant. And any questions at this point? Commissioner Garrettson.
Green is on. Has the traffic engineer looked at this project relative to entrance off Guajome in terms of the potential of backing up onto the tracks?
So I understand the city's traffic engineer has been working with the developer on access Guajome. They have to coordinate with the rail authority over the, you know, access into the project to make sure that it's safe enough distance from the rail line and it's designed appropriately to allow safe access into and out of the site. So that would be a requirement they would obviously have to meet as part of the formal design review. We've only done a cursory look at this to determine that it's possible. But the final design would be upon a formal application.
Because that would be one of my concerns because you basically have, what, 20 feet from the time you cross the railroad track to turn left into there?
So you have to recognize also that they're purchasing the property at 212 Guajome, which is the first home after you pass the track. So the access that's there today is not where the access would be for the project.
Okay. Thank you. Would this be bigger than any other building in Vista in terms of it's really connected? So the mass of it really includes all three buildings?
That's a good question. I think it would be the, yeah, the biggest residential connected building in Vista.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Agar.
Yeah, I had the same concern about the rail and access
Because when I sat on the NCTD board, I know that that's, I mean, you're dealing with federal lands and NCTD, not just...
Yeah, so staff has the same concerns. We did notify, you know, the applicant of that. They do have a traffic engineer, they have coordinated with the PUC as well as city staff out there. So they're working through that.
They're working through it, okay.
But we're not going to bring a project before you for a formal review until that issue's resolved.
Yeah, and I'm glad the developer addressed the color and look of the building. That was one of my main concerns, is it stands out, it's stark, it doesn't blend into the surrounding community. So that would, that definitely has to be addressed. For right now, that's, well, I did have a question. There's this talk about avocados and citrus, I'm assuming they're going to plant that?
That's the proposal, yes.
And who's going to, I mean, I guess the project will water it and take care of it, I mean...
So we can ask Lev to answer that if...
That's a great question. We'd like to think of it as a giant backyard. You live in an apartment complex, but why shouldn't you have access to oranges and fresh avocado toast? So I'm imagining an industrial-sized orange squeezer in the lobby. Go pick some oranges and make yourself some juice. Yeah, we plan to plant them and take care of them.
Okay, great, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, Commissioner Savage, questions for the applicant or staff?
Yeah, a question for the applicant as well, sorry. Right as we're just sitting.
Happy to stay.
So the fence on the back, it seems that there's some talk about having the community access. And that top peak there, I believe, is that where a gate would be or an opening for access for pedestrians?
Let's see, are you talking about up here? Curse is not very... Nope, doesn't work.
At the most western point, at the very top, is kind of where I was imagining that there might be pedestrian access for accessing that hillside. And I didn't know if that was intentional or not.
We're going to study it. There is some slope and elevation change, you know, visually to a layman. I'm not a civil engineer or an architect. But to me, it's the upper left-hand corner where there's kind of a carve-out where there currently is, I think it's 404 Lotto, Lotto de Loma House. And we've met with Sam, we've talked with Sam at our town hall, and he walks his dog. He lives three houses up this way. And he was really excited about the idea of having some sort of a pocket park or some sort of a community garden. We love that idea, we've, you know, gently broached that with staff. We'd love to deliver on that. Our biggest concern is who owns it? Agencies have a different framework for liability than a private entity. So we would be interested in building it and potentially even, you know, maintaining it to some level. But it would have to be some sort of a, you know, under the city's purview of liability, if you will.
And yeah, that's great. And then the other item, just clarifying, there's a dog run mentioned on the left-hand side. It's also mentioned as a park in some of your drawings. Just wanted to clarify if that was a park or a dog run.
Yeah, it's a great question. We'd like to tease that out further from, you know, our neighbors and figure out what works better. I've met with Chris Sims, his house is immediately to the left of the property. And I asked him if that would be an issue for him, having a place where people are already drawn. He said anything is better than what is currently being drawn here. So no, I think a park would be great. And as long as it's got, you know, some level of low lighting and somebody is, you know, is responsible for it, that would be great.
Yeah, I just, I want to say, I think if you guys are looking for having young families, the parks around, I mean, that would be a really big service to them. So I think it would be more attractive to young families with a park there. As someone with young children myself, so that does look exciting. But I think that's my only questions on this. Thank you guys, you've done a really excellent job here.
Thank you.
Commissioner Looney.
Thank you. One question for staff and a few questions for the applicant. John, is there any means or is there any method to develop a quiet zone for the train whistles at this particular crossing?
Yeah, that's a...
Been successful in Del Mar, they've been successful in Oceanside?
Yeah, it's a possibility. It's just not something the city's done because of the cost of the improvements.
Okay.
It's a rather expensive venture, plus we, you know, we have to go through a whole design. So NCTD has worked with us on that. We have, the city's position is if we're going to do that, we're going to do it citywide. So we're going to hit all the major intersections and try to do a quiet zone project throughout Vista. We haven't selected them one by one because how do you decide, you know, which neighborhood gets it and which one doesn't? So that's the staff recommendation. We just haven't got the funding to really move forward with it at this time.
Would that also include the freight trains that come through on Tuesday and Thursday mornings? About 1:30? Early.
Yes, the quiet zone deals with all types of train traffic on the tracks.
Okay. And then for the applicant, I understand that these are conceptual drawings. And there are some contradictory images on the landscape plan than what's on the civil plan, the grading plan. I think it would be beneficial for the commissioners to have maybe the landscape plans more reflective of what is shown on the civil. I'm assuming that the civil is going to be more technical and more accurate than the freehand sketches on the landscape. The freehand landscape drawings are very effective communicator. You don't see it very often anymore. But I think it would be good to have some of those conflicts resolved on the site plan. Another question. Was there any inquiry to the owners of 398 and 404 on purchasing their properties and making that a part of this package?
Let's see, I'm getting my numbers mixed up here. Short answer is no. And I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you, that's all that I had.
Okay, no other questions from the commissioners, so it's my turn. Tell me about the micro-units, 340 square foot studio. Tell me about that.
Yeah, you know, one of the challenges we had on the Found Lofts project, the one on Terrace Drive in South Santa Fe, when we first started working on in 2016, was this exact issue. The municipal code for our units that were 435 square feet, you know, didn't really allow for that. Our bank thought we were crazy and wasn't willing to give us money. And what I could tell you is those were the first units that leased. They leased within a week and a half, the smallest unit. So unfortunately, it's a price point issue. We designed the units to be highly functional and efficient. Some of the units have Murphy beds, high-end Murphy beds, service couches.
I would like to see that when you come back, okay? That, I would be interested to see how that's laid out. And then on your four-bedroom units, it appears, it's hard to tell. And I would like a sheet in the plans that have all the floor plans laid out at a scale that I don't have to use my magnifying glass on. But anyway, it appeared that the four bedrooms are all approximately the same size. Was that intentional, or how did you make that decision?
You know, it's really a product that doesn't exist yet. So we're kind of playing around with the idea of trying to deliver something like that. It's hard to underwrite because lenders look at them, they're like, okay, show me another one of those. And you can't really do that. So I'm certain that our unit mix will continue to evolve as we get input and continue to refine the project, things will shift around. I think for the time being, it was driven just by the utility and function of the space. Is it fair to say that?
Yeah, there is for functional spaces. But also, we have seen in other cities where four-bedroom apartments could start working, is two families, two young families sharing, sisters living together, a young couple with their grandparents sharing the income of renting a place. It gives a little bit of opportunities that it opens to a different group that we are not seeing yet completely, but it's coming along. And I think that there would be an interesting thing to have in this place. And it fits perfectly on the site, so that's the answer.
Yeah, I'm excited to see the four-bedroom, I'm glad to see that. I'm just concerned about who's going to live there. We've seen dual masters presented to the planning commission before. And up to, you know, two couples could live there and then four cars. So my concern goes to parking, so. And then the access to 398 Lotto de Loma comes through the property?
Correct. There's one recorded easement, which is an easement to a triplex off of Lotto de Loma. We are keeping that easement. I've also spoken with Lou, and I think that may be the gentleman you're referring to. And we confirm that we will maintain an access for him, more of a service-type access if he wants to take care of the land or put in a pool or something like that, as well as with our other neighbor, Christopher Sims. So we will make sure to maintain access for them.
Is that his only access to this property?
It is not a recorded easement, it's a arguably prescriptive easement. But we're going to honor it.
All right, very good. Normally, when somebody comes to us with a general plan amendment looking to increase density, we ask them about a public benefit, one that we recently did up in Vista Grande. They're going to improve the intersection of East Vista Way and Wormlands. What public benefit are you guys thinking about to justify this increase in the density?
Yeah, great question. There's a couple. Hopefully, I'm not going to upset John by putting this one out there since it was voiced by someone else. But I would love the idea of, you know, helping designate this area as a quiet zone. We're already having to work with California Public Utilities Commission, NCDT, and Sandag because of the rail crossing. So to the extent we have elbow grease there and we could eliminate, you know, some of that noise, we'd be happy to be a partner on that exercise. We love the idea of self-imposing a community space at Lotto. We'd like to work with the city to figure out how to do that, whether it's a dedication like we did with the sidewalk on Terrace Drive. We're happy to do that. Staff has also expressed the desire for connectivity to Eddie Drive from the project. You know, we've studied that, and we believe that with the density that we're proposing, we could take on that additional cost of building that quarter-mile-long sidewalk.
I've looked at it also, and I'm concerned that the five-foot sidewalk will have difficult fitting that in. So I'm going to be interested to see a specific on that design.
Absolutely.
Okay, that concludes comments or questions from the planning commission. We'll move on now to public comment period. And the first person I have is Sid Rothenberg, followed by Carol Heran. Erin?
Yes, I'm Sid Rothenberg. And I've lived off of Lotto de Loma since 1991. In the 30 years that I've been there, I've seen many changes. And the city has always promised it'll be better and the congestion will be worse, be better. I'm nervous at this, I'm sorry. And that's not the way it's been. I challenge the developers to sit at the railroad track in Kwahomey for an entire day and watch the traffic that goes up and down this very winding, narrow road. It is terrible.